Bueno, ¿cómo estás? Estamos en un mundo muy interesante, lo que significa que es un mundo muy aterrador. Y lo que se está haciendo en este punto, en ambos lados del Atlántico en particular, no es, a primera vista, particularmente refrescante o seguro. La situación es la siguiente: tenemos un presidente que no es apto para... incluso para el ciudadano, en realidad, que es clínicamente loco. Y los detalles de eso son que no hay duda, en realidad, de que es clínicamente loco. Sin embargo, el problema es que debido a ciertas cosas que han pasado durante las últimas varias décadas, nosotros, en los Estados Unidos, no tenemos más el tipo de coraje que un ciudadano tendría en tiempos anteriores. La asesinía de Kennedy, de John F. Kennedy, y la iniciación de la larga guerra entre China e India, en la que perdimos nuestra moralidad, nuestro coraje y todo lo demás, ha tomado su toll. Y lo que ha pasado desde entonces, en particular en los últimos casi diez años ahora, bajo George W. Bush Jr. y Obama, ha hecho todo para destruir la confianza y incluso la moralidad de nuestro pueblo. Ahora, el problema es intrínsecamente un viejo tipo de problema. Nosotros, en los Estados Unidos, fuimos particularmente afortunados en el sentido de que hubo una Renaissance que ocurrió, en realidad, probablemente implícitamente con la nacimiento de Nicholas Vukuzia en 4001. Y este hombre resultó ser el mayor genio, probablemente el mayor genio de toda la historia desde su enfoque hacia la madurez. Cambió la ciencia, cambió todo más que cualquier otro individuo en este proceso. Y de esto tuvimos desarrollos científicos y otros desarrollos que fueron sin precedentes en el sentido de que todo antes de la nacimiento de Kuzia, todo antes del comienzo del siglo XV, era mucho inferior a, en cada aspecto, lo que pasó con el Consejo de Florencia y las cosas asociadas con eso. Y a pesar de todos los males que se han hecho en el curso de la historia moderna, la historia europeana en particular, a pesar de la larga guerra religiosa desde 1492 hasta 1648, a pesar del espectáculo de horror que creó el Imperio Británico en la Guerra de Siete Anos, y ha continuado creando desde entonces, a pesar del horror que queda de la Imperia Romana, de Byzantium, de las Cruzadas, y del espectáculo de la Guerra de 1492 hasta 1648, ese periodo, hemos logrado algo, especialmente en el comienzo de 1620, con el aterrizaje de los pilgrantes. Pilgrimas allí. Y luego el desarrollo de la colonia de la playa de Massachusetts. Durante este periodo, desde 1492 hasta el aplastamiento de la colonia de la playa de Massachusetts, hemos lanzado la mayor iniciativa de civilización desde, en realidad, el trabajo de la gran Renaissance. Y de esto surgió, a pesar del aplastamiento de nosotros por los intereses británicos o por el que se convirtió en el Imperio Británico, hemos logrado durante un periodo de 1620 hasta 1782, establecer una república que es única en toda la historia humana, pero que se encontró al final de ese siglo con la Revolución Francesa y efectos similares. Nos encontramos repetidamente aplastados porque aquí estábamos, éramos un gran movimiento, una gran nación, realmente llegando a ser en el lado atlántico del mundo, mientras todo el diablo estaba desprendiendo bajo el Imperio Británico. Desde entonces, han habido periodos en los que nuestra influencia, y hemos tenido amigos y aliados en otras partes del mundo, en los que hemos tenido un surgiendo momentáneo, como mejor se describe por el caso de Franklin Roosevelt, el Presidente Franklin Roosevelt. Fue una revolución absoluta. Éramos una tienda de basura política y moral desde la asesinía de McKinley hasta la elección de Franklin Roosevelt. Bajo Franklin Roosevelt, logramos por un momento una gran afirmación de nuestras tradiciones. Con la muerte de Roosevelt y el advento de Truman, comenzamos a ir hacia abajo de nuevo, y abajo, abajo, abajo. Por un momento, John F. Kennedy resumió la influencia y las tendencias de Franklin Roosevelt. Y luego fue asesinado. Fue asesinado por gente que estaba vinculada a Wall Street y vinculada a Londres. Ese es el que lo mató. Y fue deliberado. Y el asesinato de su hermano, Robert Kennedy, esa asesinía también fue deliberada. Y de la asesinía de esos dos Kennedys, esta nación nunca se ha recuperado completamente hasta el día actual. Bill Clinton hizo un excelente trabajo en lo que trataba de hacer, pero las circunstancias bajo las que vivió como Presidente no eran las mejores. Ahora hemos llegado al punto, hasta la semana pasada, comienza este domingo pasado, en el que Europa, Europa Occidental, comenzó a degenerar, a colapsar, y los Estados Unidos están a la vanguardia de plomear en el mismo colapso transatlántico. En realidad, el entero mundo transatlántico, de las Américas a Europa, ahora está en una crisis general de desgaste. Está terminado en su forma actual. Y en su forma actual, nunca habrá, en nuestras vidas o más allá, nunca habrá una recuperación a menos que la llevemos a efecto ahora. Y mi estimación es que nunca escaparemos de esto a menos que muy pronto expulsemos al Presidente actual de los Estados Unidos de su oficina. Si no podemos encontrar a la gente que tenga los corajes, cuando la evidencia es de que este Presidente es clínicamente loco, lo dije en 2009, y todo lo que dije entonces es verdad hoy, no cometí ningún error. Este tipo debería haber sido expulsado de la oficina entonces, cuando presenté el caso para su insanity. Ahora lo ves ahora, está destruyendo todo, está matando a los estadounidenses en masa con sus políticas económicas y relacionadas. Ha llevado a cabo guerras ilegales. Se convierte en un agente de un poder extranjero trabajando contra los intereses de los Estados Unidos. Mira, veamos la situación financiera. Lo que pasó bajo el comienzo, esencialmente, bajo George W. Bush Jr., que era, no sé dónde estaba cuando estaba allí, pero en ese punto lanzamos una política en oposición a mi propuesta de protección bancaria de la Ley de 2007, que habría detenido esta crisis. Pero no, algunas personas pensaron que eran más inteligentes que yo. Y lo que hicieron fue que nos llevaron a partir de ese momento hacia lo que pasó en 2008, el comienzo de la desintegración de la economía de los Estados Unidos. Y la economía de los Estados Unidos ha estado desintegrando desde entonces, sin ninguna esperanza de recuperación, bajo las políticas de George W. Bush Jr. o de Obama. Obama ha hecho más para traer y destruir a los Estados Unidos que cualquier otro traidor en nuestra historia. Pero tenemos que perdonarlo porque es clínicamente loco. Pero luego, ¿podemos perdonar a aquellos que están enfrentados a la evidencia de un Presidente loco, que está cometiendo actos murderos, actos de guerra, que estaban en violación de la Constitución? ¿Podemos perdonar a la gente que está en el poder, que tiene el poder, que no tiene los corajes para expulsar a este tipo de funcionario bajo la sección 4 de la 25ª Enmienda, por la cual es culpable, completamente culpable, por las violaciones de la Constitución, las frecuentes, por las cuales es culpable? Estamos allí como impotentes ciegos viendo a nuestro pueblo y nuestra nación destruidas bajo la influencia de este propio pupet de los británicos. Y las únicas personas que luchan son unos pocos de nosotros. Yo, por uno, y algunos generales, algunos oficiales generales y personas similares, que nos advirtieron de que lo que hace Obama es una amenaza para la existencia de los Estados Unidos. Tiene un efecto que es tantísimo a lo que es la traición contra los Estados Unidos y su pueblo. Está aumentando la tasa de muerte entre nuestro pueblo voluntariamente. Está destruyendo las instituciones sobre las que depende la recuperación. Está actuando para destruir la oferta de alimentos, tal como vendrá en la primavera del próximo año. Vamos a tener una amenaza ahora mismo de destrucción masiva a través de la estancamiento y tipos similares de condiciones en gran escala entre nuestro pueblo. Y solo unos pocos de nosotros, algunos generales, yo y algunos otros, han mostrado la sabiduría y corajes para reconocer que las políticas de este Presidente deben ser llevadas a una cesación. De otra forma, esta nación y probablemente la civilización en general no sobrevivirá. Estamos en una situación en la que estamos amenazados por llevar a los Estados Unidos a una guerra general de guerra termonuclear, no solo una guerra nuclear, sino una guerra termonuclear. En la semana pasada, el Presidente de los Estados Unidos, así se llama, atacó a su Secretaria de Estado y la obligó, bajo la intimidación, a decir cosas contrarias a su creencia, pero usando el músculo completo de la presidencia para amenazarla para aplastarla. Y ella hizo cosas bajo esa presión de ser virtualmente aplastada por esta bestia, este loco llamado Presidente, que causó un estrés entre nuestro aliado más importante de los Estados Unidos en ese momento. Rusia, bajo la dirección de Medvedev y Putin, son seriamente los más efectivos juntos con China, el mejor socio de los Estados Unidos contra esa amenaza. La cooperación entre Rusia y los Estados Unidos con el acuerdo con China y algunas otras características detendría esta guerra, detendría este peligro. Así que este Presidente, que no es apto para ser cazador de perros, los perros probablemente estarían de acuerdo, ha creado este tipo de situación en la que en realidad es un agente británico. En realidad, es solo un agente británico. Probablemente no fue elegido, es decir, probablemente no fue nominado para la nominación democrática como Presidente. Una cosa muy sucia pasó allí. Y todo fue pagado con dinero de drogas británico. Y quiero decir dinero de drogas británico. La Reina de Inglaterra empuja las drogas. Y tenemos un pequeño juicio en esa cuestión en los Estados Unidos involucrando al Attorney General de los Estados Unidos. ¿Estaban gobernando por una operación de empujamiento de drogas?, que es lo que era, ¿o no? Así que aquí estamos. Estamos en una situación desesperada. Las precondiciones para una guerra general de guerra termonuclear han existido. Lo que ha pasado es que desde el asesinato masivo, que fue perpetrado por el Presidente de los Estados Unidos en defensa de la Constitución, el asesinato masivo en Libia, fue asesinato criminal. Esto no es matar, esto fue asesinato criminal, asesinato políticamente motivado de un jefe de Estado en una guerra que fue llevada a cabo en violación de la Constitución de los Estados Unidos. Ahora esto ha llevado a un intento de los británicos, el gobierno francés y el gobierno de los Estados Unidos, actualmente, para empujar una guerra hacia el Medio Oriente, en el objetivo específicamente de Siria y Irán. Sin embargo, si miras la configuración militar en el Mediterráneo, el Medio Mediterráneo y en el Golfo de Persia, ves que las tropas allí no están ahí para una pequeña operación como una nueva guerra de Irak. Lo que se intende es una confrontación con Rusia, la, ya sabes, la potencia nuclear principal en este planeta, es decir, Rusia, la antigua Unión Soviética, lo que queda de eso en Rusia, tiene el mayor potencial en términos de potencia nuclear estricta en este planeta. La única otra nación que es relevante para la guerra mayor, la guerra continua, utilizando la energía termonuclear nuclear es los Estados Unidos. El significativo despliegue de las fuerzas de los Estados Unidos en la región mediterránea y en el Golfo es la capacidad de guerra termonuclear de los Estados Unidos. Tenemos una fuerza repetible, profunda, para conducir guerra termonuclear, que no tiene la Gran Bretaña y otras naciones. Pueden tener capacidades termonucleares, pero no tienen una capacidad de knock-out-slow sostenible en términos de guerra termonuclear. Los únicos oponentes relevantes de los Estados Unidos, Gran Bretaña y Francia, en perpetuar este crimen, este crimen de guerra, es China, es la única nación que tiene alguna capacidad comparable. Así que lo que estás mirando aquí es si las fuerzas de los Estados Unidos atacan, y saben que un ataque significa una confrontación termonuclear, lo que significa que los Estados Unidos tienen que comprometerse con una ataque termonuclear preemptivo, significa que estamos enfrentados a una guerra general de guerra termonuclear. Y quién puede sobrevivir de eso es muy en duda. Pero el Presidente de los Estados Unidos junto con la gente que lo controla en Londres, alrededor de la reina británica, están determinados para empujarnos a esa política. Tenemos a un hombre a quien tengo dudas, es un viejo enemigo, Gorbachev lo llamo. Fue mi oponente cuando estaba propiciando, en un punto, la iniciativa de defensa estratégica, algo que concocté y tenía mucho apoyo de varios países, incluyendo al Presidente de los Estados Unidos, Ronald Reagan en ese momento. Estamos ahora en el punto en el que nuestras capacidades ponen un esfuerzo contra la combinación de las fuerzas británicas, llevándonos al borde de, no de una guerra local, ni de esto, ni de aquello. Estamos dirigidos con esta confrontación con Rusia, que el Presidente de los Estados Unidos empuja muy duro en sus ataques a su propia Secretaria de Estado, Hillary Clinton. Este hombre y sus respaldadores británicos son locos, peores que Hitler, y están llevándonos al borde de una guerra termonuclear. Y la mayoría de la gente en esta audiencia ni siquiera sabe qué es una guerra termonuclear. Pero es algo mucho más que cualquier cosa en su imaginación. Y las únicas personas de nosotros, aparte de mí y algunos otros, que están efectivamente oponiéndose a esto públicamente, son algunos oficiales generales y personas con credenciales similares en el ejército de los Estados Unidos. Han sido la única cosa significativamente en el camino de nuestro ser ya plomear en una guerra termonuclear, de la que la raza humana podría no sobrevivir. Y esa es nuestra situación. Y el problema es que nuestros políticos, nuestros políticos electos que lideran, no tienen corajes cuando se trata del desafío de actuar para salvar a los Estados Unidos de este tipo de espectáculo de horror, de rendirse a un Obama que podrían expulsar de la oficina en la mañana, y que debería ser expulsado en la mañana, y debería ser ayer por la mañana si es posible. Y eso es lo que enfrentamos. Así que podemos hablar de coraje y cosas así, pero el coraje no es solo la idea de salir y tener los corajes para atacar a alguien o algo así. Ahora, el coraje es la habilidad de hacer lo que tienes que hacer cuando lo haces, es extremadamente peligroso. Ese es el coraje. Y no tenemos mucho coraje de ese tipo entre nuestros miembros del Congreso. Solo tenemos unos pocos sospechos que conozco que intentaría confiar, tanto en el lado republicano como probablemente en el lado democrático. Sé que el antiguo Presidente de los Estados Unidos, Clinton, tiene buenas intenciones en estos tipos de asuntos. Sé que su esposa, que prácticamente fue brutalizada por el Presidente de los Estados Unidos, también tiene instintivamente excelentes intenciones y carácter en este asunto. Pero ella ha sido acosada. ¿Quieres hablar de racismo y tipos similares, feminismo y cosas así? Eso es todo. Tienes a un loco, un loco, un hombre que no es apto para mantenerse en la oficina, un jugador de baloncesto, que amenaza a ella e intenta intimidarla contra su propia intención de tratar de hacerla un vehículo en la creación de un incidente entre Rusia y los Estados Unidos, con la amenaza de que algo terrible le suceda si no se sube. Tenemos una prensa que no cuenta esa historia, y es una historia verdadera bien conocida. Y es una historia que involucra la amenaza de que estemos involucrados en una guerra termonuclear global. Allí estamos. Y no encuentro a los políticos en general, o incluso la mayoría de nuestros ciudadanos, que tienen una sensación de corajes para hacer cualquier cosa con esto. Están allí y se lamentan y dicen que tenemos que seguir adelante para seguir adelante. Dicen, vamos a esperar a la próxima elección. Amigo, vas a ser derribado por la próxima elección si no haces algo ahora. Este hombre debe ser expulsado de la oficina ahora. Es clínicamente loco. La sección 4 de la 25ª Enmienda prescribe precisamente los remedios para tomar. También ha cometido violaciones de la Constitución, que son suficientes para su expulsión de la oficina. ¿Por qué no lo hacemos? ¿Por qué no lo hacemos? Allí estamos. Ahora, hay otro aspecto de esta situación que también es igual de importante. ¿Cómo sabemos algo? ¿Cómo podemos decir que sabemos algo? Por un lado, lo que tenemos es una manera de saber qué está pasando en el mundo es la percepción de sentidos. Ahora, puedo decirte que la percepción de sentidos no es muy confiable. Es algo de nuestro lado animal. Estos no son instrumentos científicos precisos, pero la humanidad, usando un conjunto de varios instrumentos de este tipo, estos llamados instrumentos de percepción de sentidos, es capaz de usar contradicciones y contrastes entre diferentes tipos de percepción de sentidos para tratar de inventar una fórmula de cómo lidiar con las cosas. Por ejemplo, la descubrimiento de la gravedad, que fue hecho únicamente por un gran hombre, Kepler. Kepler fue la única persona que jamás descubrió la gravedad, nadie más lo hizo. Las únicas personas que lo hicieron fueron aquellos que repitió su descubrimiento o trabajaron en perfectarlo y extenderlo. Así que Kepler descubrió la gravedad. ¿Cómo lo hizo? Bueno, primero de todo, tomó dos principios. Uno fue el principio de vista, usando el telescopio. El otro fue la armonía. Y estos dos tipos de percepción de sentidos, percepción de sentidos humanos, juntados entre sí se usaron como una forma de probar experimentalmente una conclusión que llamamos el principio de gravedad universal, que Einstein, por ejemplo, se refería a en la definición de la naturaleza del espacio-tiempo, la forma en que se organiza. Así que todas nuestras grandes descubrimientos científicos se basaron en el uso de instrumentos imperfectos, aquellos con los que normalmente nacemos. Percepción de sentidos, vista, olfato, etc. Estos son los medios por los que intentamos averiguar qué está pasando fuera de nuestra piel. No tenemos en realidad conocimiento directo de lo que está pasando fuera de nuestra piel, pero por este tipo de método tenemos una forma de aproximarse y estimar qué está pasando fuera de nosotros. Ahora, en los años más recientes, hemos llegado con una mejor fuente de información. Comenzó esto con un tipo llamado Aristóteles, que fue la primera persona a descubrir cómo es el tamaño de la Tierra. Hizo un experimento muy famoso, en realidad varios de ellos, que determinaron eso. Y este tipo de proceso en el desarrollo de la astronomía, usando también la astronomía general del sistema de estrellas y demás, fue la primera fuente de información con la ayuda de la vista, con la ayuda de la vista, en encontrar una forma de saber qué es el universo real, en comparación con la percepción de sentidos ordinaria, que los perros y demás tienen. Así que esto nos dio la habilidad de construir lo que hoy llamamos el electrónico general o tipos similares de cosas, astronomía, y estos tipos de cosas que estamos haciendo ahora. Así que tenemos dos fuentes de información físicas, que en contraste nos dan nuestro conocimiento de cómo se organiza el universo. Una es la percepción de sentidos. La percepción de sentidos es intrínsecamente no confiable. Es confiable para ciertos fines, pero no nos dice cuáles son los principios del universo y cómo se organiza. Entonces tenemos también electrónica, lo que llamamos electrónica, que incluye la telescopía y demás, estos otros medios. Y contrastando estos dos conjuntos de medios, lo que podríamos llamar por un lado electrónica y por el otro percepción de sentidos, el contraste de ambos nos da dos medios. Uno, el menos confiable, que es la percepción de sentidos. El otro es la electrónica. Bueno, la electrónica es mucho más precisa que la percepción de sentidos en términos de física. Y por lo tanto, a medida que hemos avanzado en la ciencia física y hemos podido extender nuestro conocimiento humano hacia las partes más grandes del universo, como Riemann describió en su disertación de habilidad, podemos ahora, hoy, hacer cosas y ser capaces de entender cosas que la humanidad nunca ha sido capaz de entender antes. Este ventaja, este ganar, nos ha dado el poder para el bien y el poder de destruir el planeta al mismo tiempo, y la estupidez con la que ayudar en destruir el planeta al mismo tiempo. Allí estamos. Y por lo tanto, las grandes decisiones que tienen que ser tomadas no se hacen en la forma del campo de batalla, aunque el campo de batalla está muy allí. Las decisiones que se deben tomar no son la que puede ganar la guerra, porque ganar la guerra ahora, cuando estás hablando de capacidades termonucleares y el tipo de guerra que hace que esos capacidades se useen en ambos lados, sea cual sean los dos lados, ya no puedes hablar de guerra de la manera antigua. La humanidad ahora ha llegado a la capacidad y también a un grado de estupidez, insanity, de que tenemos la habilidad de destruir este planeta, o la habilidad de destruir la mayoría de la gente que vive en este planeta, de destruir la civilización. Así que el problema no es la guerra. El problema es cuál es la alternativa a la guerra. Porque bajo las tendencias actuales, siempre que el Imperio Británico mantiene el poder que sigue hoy, y siempre que la mayoría de los estadounidenses son estojeros, en realidad, por el Imperio Británico, la guerra no es la pregunta, es deshacerse de aquellos y el poder de aquellos que nos causaría la guerra. Hay problemas que se deben resolver en este planeta, pueden ser solucionados por otros medios. La guerra no es necesaria para resolver estos problemas. Hay otros medios por los que podemos controlar este planeta si deseamos. Pero hay algunas personas que desean de destruir el planeta en ese sentido, y el típico de ellos es el Imperio Británico. Hay una parte oscura de la historia de la humanidad, que es muy relevante para esta situación. La humanidad, de nuevo, ha sido esencialmente una bestia educada, con ciertas capacidades. Y para la mayoría de lo que conocemos como civilización, en particular la civilización europea en su forma, ha involucrado diversos tipos de guerra bajo un sistema de gobernanza, que se llama esencialmente un imperio, un sistema imperial, un sistema oligárquico. Lo que ha pasado es que en un determinado punto de nuestra historia, que es una especie de área que se ha perdido en la niebla de incertidumbres, pero el efecto que sabemos, el proceso exacto que no sabemos en detalle, pero sabemos mucho de ello. En un determinado punto, su poder marítimo desarrolló en la superficie de este planeta. No era sólo un poder marítimo ordinario, en realidad fue transatlántico y de naturaleza similar. Así que las grandes culturas que nos dieron el conocimiento de la astronomía fueron generalmente los grandes navegadores de viajes transatlánticos. Y por lo tanto, de este grupo, que es mucho más inteligente porque mucho más informado por la información, por lidiar con la astronomía, así es como obtuvimos nuestro sistema astronómico. Fueron algunos de los grandes navegadores que eran navegadores transoceánicos, y aprendiendo cómo navegar por las estrellas y tipos similares de consideraciones. Digamos, hace 200, 400,000 años, emergió una cultura marítima que tenía un poder superior a través de este conocimiento de la astronomía y demás, un poder mayor que la gente ordinaria. Y entre estos personas, estos tipos de marineros, se convirtieron en colonizadores. La mayoría de la población humana no estaba en la zona de tierra, estaba en la zona de la costa o en los lagos y vías de agua. Y así estas personas eran granjas, o como granjas, ganas y cazadores. Estaban muy débiles en términos de sus capacidades estratégicas relativas a los grandes navegadores que actuaron... relative to the great navigators who acted almost like pirates. So this kind of quasi-piracy became a dominant feature in much of the world's oceans and on the coast of the oceans. And the ordinary people who were farmers or the like found themselves the victims of the strategic advantage of the maritime culture. From this came what is known as the oligarchical system, which is what the Peloponnesian War, for example, was an illustration of. So you had naval power descending upon people on the land or coastal areas and enslaving them and said, "You are animals. We are gods." And the term "gods" was a term which was applied in various languages to the navigational marinating system, which was able to imprison and to enslave virtually. And these people would treat human beings otherwise as animals. They would slaughter the excess animal or control them in other means. And so we had this fight like the Peloponnesian War, this fight where the oligarchy said, "We are the gods. You are the cattle. When you become too numerous, we kill you. When you become threatening, we kill you. When you become too intelligent, we kill you. We destroy you." And that has been the basis for the dominant culture of this planet. In the process of modern history and earlier, there was a struggle against the oligarchical system. And from that, there emerged the effort at modern society, which the founding of our United States as a separate part, a separate from Europe, was an essential part. The strength of our United States is we are superior to Europe in one respect, that because Europeans have never freed themselves of the full continental European grip of the oligarchical system, like the monarchies. We've never freed, they've never freed themselves of this oligarchical tradition and this monarchical expression. The British Empire is still the British Empire. Every part of Africa is controlled by the British Empire. And anybody who doesn't admit that is a liar or stupid. The British Empire controls all of Africa. The British Empire owns Saudi Arabia. It controls the Arab Middle East. It controls other parts of the world. It's a real empire, like the old empires. And we in the United States are crucial because it is our position, from our founding of what we are in the United States, which gave the world the opportunity to get rid of the oligarchical system. But you have all these Wall Street types who are nothing but British ascisters, agents of the oligarchical system, who will even as citizens of the United States will ally with the British Empire to destroy the United States or destroy what the United States means. And the suckers go along with it inside the United States. The people who've lost their cowardice in judgment, have lost their courage in judgment, continue to allow this to happen. We've come to the point that we're now at the urge of thermonuclear war. We've been there since the close of the Libyan adventure. We are now still there. Recently, with the assault on the, by the President of the United States against his Secretary of State, we came a very large step closer to thermonuclear war. What the President did, President Obama did, in his attack, his savage attack and two successive attacks to brutalize the Secretary of State, Hillary Clinton, brought the world closer to thermonuclear war. And nobody in the United States has done anything about it. Nobody has moved to get this bum out of office, which is essential if we want to stop thermonuclear war, prevent it. No one has defended her significantly publicly. None of our colleagues has defended her against the abuse that was done to her. He should be thrown out of office for that itself. Any president who does that to one of his officers on that basis and for that reason? First of all, how did this happen? Well, you have a former Soviet official, Gorbachev, an old enemy of mine and a British agent, who was up against, together with President Reagan, on this issue of the SDI. The SDI was my baby. It's called in, President Reagan adopted it, promoted it. The Soviet incumbent, who was also a British agent at that time, not really a honest Russian patriot, backed up the British against the SDI. And senators and others of the United States went along with the British on orders emanating from Andropov, the head of the Soviet Union. Gorbachev, who went through a similar exercise, is also a traitor to the Soviet Union and to Russia today, and also a British agent. And this British agent, Gorbachev, was the guy who was involved in the intimidation of the Secretary of State of the United States in this manner. And the President of the United States was an accomplice in that operation, using an agent of the British interest in setting up the threat of a thermonuclear attack on Russia and thus a thermonuclear war between Russia and the United States, et cetera, et cetera. And we sit back there and say, "Well, it's not our time to act. It's not our time to do anything. It's not our time to meet these challenges." So what we face in our own people out there, especially those in higher influences in office, who do not act to throw this bum out while we still have a nation, while we still have no thermonuclear war, they are actually like traitors. They don't mean to be traitors, but only cowards. And sometimes, there's a little difference between the two of them. That's where we are now. We are now starving to death. Our economy is being destroyed by this president under orders from London, as of next spring. If nothing else happens, many of our Americans are going to die of hunger because the food supply has been destroyed under the policies of this incumbent president. There will be no adequate food supplies come this spring. The time, last time to get, solve that problem is the time to throw this president out of office now, specifically under the 25th Amendment, Section 4. And also under the fact that he's also violated the Constitution repeatedly and is vulnerable for expulsion. In the meantime, you've got a bunch of Republicans as candidates who it visible now are no relief to this threat. We don't have any great geniuses who you can trust out there in the Republican roster of candidates. We have some people who may be gentlemen, some not, but some others may be, act like gentlemen. We don't have, we have a Democrat, this president, who wants to be re-erected or something. He's no damn good. But if we could somehow just throw this person bum out, throwing Obama out, what would that do? It would mean that you would have all kinds of prospects for a Democrat to put up. And we wouldn't go, I wouldn't go for a Democratic-only ticket. I would go for a bipartisan ticket because what we need is a coordination and collaboration among the best people of our political system in major national office. That's what we need. I certainly would not want to have a Democratic platform of candidates, of federal candidates, which should not include certain Republican members. Because you can't trust the Democratic Party as a whole. But you could trust the testable qualities of leadership, of proven leadership, of certain Democratic and certain Republican candidates. And since we need unity in this case, we don't have, we should not get ourselves tied up in the struggle between the Democratic and Republican tickets at this time. And we should be, that should be our policy right now. No showdown between Republicans and Democrats per se. What we need is an assembly of proven merit in terms of potential candidates of both tickets, particularly the leader, the best ones, and bring them together for a common cause. Let them be members of different parties, but let them be first citizens of the nation and representatives of the citizenship of the nations. We want the best minds of both parties, in particular. We want to get rid of the rubbish of both parties, dump it by the right side at the same time. So we now must, we must be acting now, at this moment, before Christmas, to get this bum out of office and to understand that we need to get a selection of candidates who represent the best selection of federal candidates of both tickets together. So we are going to make decisions on world affairs on the basis of the interests of the nation and the world. We are going to act, if you won't otherwise, we're going to act to bring ourselves together in collaboration, not only with people in Europe, in other places, but also in the East, in Asia, the great nations of Asia in particular. Because we have a job to do in building not only the world, our world. We have to get into space now. The nature of mankind is, it may not look like that, but for sometimes, many of us have recognized, going back to the time of the World War II and afterward, bigger than 1950s, we began to recognize that mankind could not continue to confine our habitation to Earth itself, that in our Earth-bound population must extend itself to become a space-bound population as well. There are things we have to deal with which constitute potential threats to mankind from things floating in nearby space, just like that big hunk of rock that passed between the Moon and Earth and could have smashed, smashed, you know, world to pieces. So we need, we need to get out there in order to protect mankind on Earth from environmental threats. We need to explore the solar system around us for the same purpose. We have to extend our reach into the galaxy of which we are apart. And we have to find ways in which we can adapt man to the ability to live and function in space, in the face environment on that basis. So we need at this time a sense of a world and national unity, a collaboration among nations and close collaboration within the ranks of our own leadership inside the United States. Without that kind of thought, as we go into this crisis today, I don't think we can make it. I just don't think it can happen. We can't wait. We can't wait till some last minute to make these decisions on how the government is going to compose. We know this guy must be thrown out of office. We know the British monarchy is our deadly enemy, as it always has been since the Revolutionary War. We know that we have needs for alliance and collaboration with other nations. For example, let's take one thing that we're dealing with in our organization in particular now. The future of mankind on this planet lies immediately in the withdrawal of ice from the Arctic region and the opening up of the Arctic region for the shift of human activity into the Arctic region rather than the present. Now, the technology for doing that has already begun. It's there. This development is absolutely necessary for mankind's role on Earth. It is also integrally necessary for our extension going back to the Moon, going ahead with the Mars project and other kinds of things, other things, areas which seem totally inhospitable but which mankind can make hospitable, which we can discover how to deal with. This is the future of mankind. And we have to get out from this past thing, this idea, this lurking idea of going to a thermonuclear war from which the human species might not survive, probably would not survive, or at least not survive in any significant degree. We need to get rid of the policy that leads to that confrontation, which would destroy humanity. We must throw out of office those who would violate that in all parts of the world. We have great projects to perform, great discoveries beyond our present reach, to be able to become, able to deal with. These issues facing us the next two generations and beyond to come, essentially for the remainder of this century, these are the issues of the remainder of this century. We must now proceed to begin to address those issues on behalf of the present of mankind, present both in this, in this century, the remainder of it and beyond. If we think in those terms and we look at what mankind has accomplished in this way in the past, in this direction, and say, "We're going to do it again. We're going to make the next leap for the next three-quarters of the century", as we made certain leaps in the last half-century and in the century before that. There is, there is no limitation we can put upon how far we're going to go and must go. So we need a new presidency, a new conception of politics, a refreshed planet which understands the challenges of today into the remainder of this century. We must begin to mobilize ourselves with long-term investments which lead in that direction. We must above all re-educate and inspire our citizens with the mentality which enables them to attack successfully the kinds of challenges which lie beyond escape from the present immediate threat of a general thermonuclear war, which would at the least would determine an extensive extermination of humanity throughout this planet. It is better to withdraw a bad president from office than to allow a global extermination. Thank you.
Mr. LaRouche, how are you?
Fairly well, considering my condition.
The question I was going to ask before you came on was, removing Obama and who would you replace him with?
It's easy, almost anybody. That's first. Seriously, we have plenty of candidates who are qualified as he is not. He absolutely is not qualified. He's a menace, he's a menace to civilization.
Well, I always thought he was more selected than elected.
He's not properly elected, but that doesn't mean anything. If we like the guy who's a bum, he's still a bum and we throw him out.
But those that selected him would not allow him to be put out of office. And if such a situation would arise, I'm quite sure they would have someone to step in to fulfill whatever their agenda might be.
Well, the point is, very, throw him out. Throw him out, it's very easy to get a replacement. It can be done very easily.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I have a question. If people don't know, I just moved here to work on Diane's campaign because she's gonna win. She's gonna win and we're all gonna be better for it. But the real challenge that keeps coming up in the field, and quite honestly, with many people in this room, many of the lovely people in this room, is the question of the idea that mankind, that it's not that things are getting worse at a faster rate, but mankind is entering a situation where the world as we know it is gonna be dramatically shifted, dramatically changed. So talking about, you know, Biden versus Obama, or what do you think about Ron Paul, or fractal geometry, or whatever the hell people want to talk about, I guess I have a question because you brought up the two points, being World War III and sense perception not being truthful. And I guess my question for you is, as you've also been talking about metaphor, is how, how can we really, because it seems like this is what the organizing is really about, is to give people a sense that there's a whole new world that they're gonna be in and we're gonna lead it, and you can't see it. And the reason I ask it, sorry, it's taking a little time, but the reason I ask it is I was blown away because you can tell people World War III and they kind of get it because they have this sense that they're gonna be blown up or something, or it's gonna be bad. And our generation is so messed up, some people are looking forward to it. But the thing that blew me away is a lot of people in this room. is a lot of people in this room and that you talk to in the field, they're more scared that we might not get World War III, that we might get Obama out, we might get Glass-Steagall, and then you have a revolution. And so I was wondering if you have anything to say to that because that seems to be the big block that you have with people. That's why it seems like they want to talk about these other things. Because that's the question of imagination.
Well, actually, actually, the problem is they're cowardly. And in many cases, they're induced to be cowardly because they don't see the organizable forces being pulled together which are needed to do what is absolutely necessary. And you find most politicians are wimps when it comes to facing reality. And most citizens, because they see the politicians are wimps, they decide to become wimps too. They may become very angry, but angry to no purpose. They become enraged at what's being done to them and may have strange kinds of reactions to the fact that they are enraged by what's been done to them, but they have no constructive sense of what the action is that they must take. The problem is that we don't have leaders who are leaders. Most of the members of Congress, as far as their behavior is concerned in the Congress, are not behaving as leaders. They've lost that. I know many of them and they're sitting back there doing nothing for the cause because they don't think it's their time to do that. And the point is the time is now in which either we do this or we're not going to have a civilization. So the chance for winning, the chance for the survival of civilization now depends upon a lot of people who think they are not ready to act. And because without that action by them, there's not going to be a solution. And their excuses, well, it wasn't time for me to act. It was not time for me to act. And therefore, the death of humanity will be expressed by those who say it was no time to act. Now, the alternative is you've got to know what the action is and how the time for action is determined. But if we do not throw this president out of office in the near future, you're not going to have a United States. So there's no discussion to have and thus that decision is made. Once you decide to throw him out of office, then you have a game to play. If you don't throw him out of office, kiss the United States goodbye while you can because you won't have one if he remains in office. And that's a fact. All the arguments to the contrary are absolute nonsense. There is no fact out there which justifies not throwing him out of office now. And you won't have a United States and you won't have a nation unless you do. And that's the question. Who's got the guts to do what is necessary? We simply have to throw this guy out of office. If we do, we can survive. That doesn't mean we're guaranteed we're going to survive, but we have a chance. If you keep this guy in office for any extended period now, you're not going to have a United States to talk about. There's not going to be a presidency to talk about.
Good afternoon, Mr. LaRouche. I'm Albert Philippi from New York. I've been following you for decades, since, since '75 actually, back when I was at Stony Brook. A lot of information has panned out and I have seen like a lot of the fusion information as well as the space technology information has gone from being public information to classified information. And now they're pushing that into privatized corporate structures that only serve the British Empire and all the structures like that, other empires. My question is, how do we make the transition from this current system of presidency and the United States and make our constitution basically global and do that successfully? When you're going to, right off the bat, when you get rid of Obama, you're going to alienate at least half of this country.
No.
Fighting amongst themselves.
No. Not at all.
See, see, the thing is, a lot of the politicians, like Nancy Pelosi, just made an announcement, what, a few weeks ago, they're allowing these politicians to get rich from insider trading, trading information. So you're basically saying, "We're going to cut off your gravy train so we can make a change that's going to help the entire world." There's no guarantee this is going to work. But I know you're going to need money to survive. You're not going to have that. So how do we justify or how do we change these politicians' minds when they think they're doing this for their own personal survival?
They're not really that doing, most of these politicians are not really that, that kind of person these days. What you have is a depressed political class among the members of Congress. They are giving in, they're going along to get along. They don't have the guts to do anything. And most of the things they do wrong are simply a result of the lack of guts to do right. I know many of these politicians previously. I know, in my nature of my work, I know the international situation intimately, including high levels of governments. I know generally the high levels of our own government in the United States. We have personal contact with them in various ways. I know them. The majority of the American people want no part of this president. They want him out, period. And they will not accept anything until you tell them you're throwing them out. They have become demoralized because they fear that this president is going to remain president. And they say they're enraged, they're pointing to the rage that you can expect violence, which comes from, when hopeless rage provokes violence. There's no way. And this is not a race question because Obama is the enemy of Africa. The British Empire is the enemy of Africa. Africa is a colony of the British Empire. It's a homicidal reign of the British Empire over Africa. And there are very few people who are intelligent who believe that Obama is a friend of the black people. It's a nonsense thing. He's a disease, not a person. He's a mental disease. He's an exact copy psychologically of the Emperor Nero. Go look at the Emperor Nero's record. It's all over the place. Look at it. That's your, that's your Obama. And that's what he did. And that's what he will do. That's what he's doing. You are not going to have a United States unless you throw this bum out and quick. We can't wait for the next election. We won't have a nation by that time. He's got to be thrown out now. If he's not thrown out now, forget the United States is dead and most of the people in it. And we'll probably have a thermonuclear war on top of that. So if you want to prevent those things from happening, if you care about the nation enough to prevent those things from happening, you're going to throw him out. And you will find that you will get the greatest applause you ever imagined from the majority of the American people the minute this guy goes out of office. Because then they will begin to believe that they can do something. Right now, we have a population that's gone through, over the period from Obama's presidency acquisition, from 2008, the summer 2008, when they began to hate him because he's a murderer. He's exactly the murderer I described. They began to hate him. And they got to hate him more. Then they became not hateful, but despairing. And that's dangerous. No guts. We've got to give the American people back their guts because the politicians don't have the guts, except for a few. It's not that they're bad, they just don't have the guts. And being, having no guts in a war is rather bad, a bad thing to have. And therefore, we have to care, must at all risk, do what we must to save this civilization. And the fact that we will do that and that the more of us will do that will give courage back to our friends and neighbors. And after all, this, this system is based on the idea of trying to have friends and neighbors, not, not all of us quarrels. We're trying to find the common interests of mankind which we can serve. And we're trying to define the terms of cooperation that are the actual urgent priorities for mankind now, to agree on those priorities and to take on the other issues as well. And we'll find that if we find ourselves cooperating to common issues, we'll find we'll come to agreements. Because if we have very much that we prize in our neighbor, in our agreement with our neighbor, we find it easy to agree with them on other things or to find a way of working it out. The fact that we're now in a situation where people are desperate because they have no confidence that anything good is going to happen, they are essentially enraged. And those who are not enraged actively are despondent. They're terrorized. They're saying nothing is going to work. We have to restore confidence in the people in themselves. And confidence of the people themselves is giving them back their authority. And those of us who are leaders and have taken, proven that we can take the heat of doing what I do, are able to lead. And there are a lot of people out there who will be easily able to lead if we make it possible for them to have confidence that they can do it. I've got it through all, throughout the United States. People who were, you know, angry a few years ago are now despairing. They're sitting there just saying, "There's nothing we can do. There's no hope for us. There's nothing is going to happen that's doing us any good." And they're sitting there terrorized by that kind of situation. And they've lost their confidence. Those of us who have the courage to stand up and the capability to stand up and present the alternative have, is the chief job to bring the confidence of our people back, the confidence in themselves, the confidence that what they're doing means something. And right now, the problem, most people out there, where they see the conditions of their neighbors, for example, they see the neighbors are being destroyed and they say, "We're next." And they're sitting there telling themselves, "There's not a damn thing we can do about it." My job is to say the things that have to be said which will give the people back the courage to say, "Yes, I will say that too." And once that starts, we've won.
Okay, next. Go ahead.
Yes, sir, my name is Jean DeSanto. I'm from Middletown, New Jersey. And this is more of a comment, but I agree totally. The Congress is, is terrible. My congressman had a teleconference call and I left comments at the end of the call. And this was when the Libya thing began and I complained about the fact that Obama had not gone to Congress for anything before it all started. And the written response I got, well, I had a nice letter. The first, an opening paragraph was, "Well, gee, isn't it too bad he didn't go and contact Congress about it?" And then the rest of the letter was just a bunch of gobbledygook. "What can we do about getting these congressmen to act?" And the other thing I'd like to say is, "I noticed you didn't use a teleprompter."
Thanks.
No, I don't, I don't like teleprompters. I don't get along with them. They're, they're busybodies, I'll just interrupt you. Now, there's, we could, we are going to do something and we are doing something. Now, I'm, I'm a fighter, but in certain ways. I'm not out there in the street punching people out or things like that. But when, on issues of this type, I've spent my life, and I'm now close to 90, I've spent my life on this kind of issue. And I have a certain sense of how you fight such a fight. And I'm doing it. It's what I do, it's what I know how to do. I'm not going to be running for president. I'm a little bit old for that, as you might have perceived. But I'm certainly going to make, do everything possible to create the next president as a success story. And I think I've got enough influence in various parts of the world, actually, to pull that off. All I need is a little more cooperation.
Hi, how are you doing?
Pretty good.
Me too, kind of. Although my heart's beating a little faster than yours. All right, my name's Andy. You probably have met me before, but I was, I considered myself an old friend of Jerry, one of your organizers that passed away not too long ago. And it was actually, maybe not so many people know this, but it took two to three years for him to actually get me to warm up to your organization. And then when he passed away, it felt like I lost the rock that I was actually standing on. And one of my questions, one of my questions to you is, you know, sometimes I, it's easy to bring these ideas, present these ideas to people who are around my age, but then when I try to present it to people who are older, so-called elitists, they, they just throw it away altogether. One, how do I confront these people? And two, what are the main differences and the main characteristics or the things that define classical culture that are different from our culture now?
Yeah, well, the problem is classical culture is correct. And what's happened is the destruction of classical culture has been an essential part of the destruction of the mental capabilities of the population. Classical culture has a very specific significance. What happens when it, when it becomes merely entertainment without criteria, then the people lose a mooring. The key issue here is always in humanity is what we call creativity. Now, creativity is not, you know, variation. It is not innovation. Creativity respects certain principles of the mind which only really classical cultures can convey. What we've had is people have been, lost their connection or never had it to classical culture. And therefore, they go out in life and they find themselves crippled by the lack of classical culture's access. That was to think, to think creatively occurs only in classical culture. Now, there's authentic classical cultures and there are authentic classical cultures. We can trace them all the way back to the classical Greek in particular, which is fairly well-known. We have other cases of that classical culture. And they come in different sizes, so to speak, and different flavors. But they all have certain characteristics. And it's a characteristic, it's a subject in itself as to what classical culture is. It's one of my specialties, but I don't find everybody is familiar with that specialty. But this classical culture has a very specific, unique role in developing the powers of human mind. And the lack of development of the human mind in that direction is actually an impediment to progress. This doesn't mean you're bad. It means that you have not acquired this weapon, shall we say, the weapon of progress, the present weapon of mental progress. And we have denied most people in society familiarity with what this concept is. And therefore, they're cut off from something they should have the right to know and the right to experience. If someone is really, was given, say, in music and was given a real systemic education in what musical composition is, they would find it not difficult to begin to understand what it's all about. And they would be able to understand what's wrong with the alternative. Because when you discover that you have powers of your own mind which you discover you were not using, were not using, and now you begin to get acquisition to those powers of the mind that you weren't using, you begin to find that you are much more important than you thought you were. And that role of classical culture, which is, shall we say, the beginning entry point of classical culture, when people realize that there's something there which they can't get in any other way, and it means something to them, because they understand themselves better than they did before, then they find a source of strength in that. And the first thing I'm concerned about is the sense of, the inner sense of the source of strength inside the person. And classical culture, as any, in effect, scientific education and so forth, these things strengthen the person inside because they have access to more power over society and society's condition than they do otherwise. In the sense, when they say, "Well, I am somebody. I am something. I mean something. I'm not just a thing. I've got something inside me that you need to know. I've got something inside me I need to give you." And when you can say that to your audience around you, you feel strong. You feel happy. The world is more yours. You don't have to excuse yourself for what you are. You don't have to make apologies for what you are. "I learned something yesterday, buddy, and it's good." And that's the kind of thing I would like to have conveyed to people who ask this question, exactly that. We have access, as probably with classical art and so forth, and science, we have the means to enable people to make breakthroughs, even on a fairly limited beginning basis, where they can appreciate what their mind is, what it represents. And once you're sure that your mind means something, then you're empowered, and you're not easily crushed. You don't have to apologize to yourself.
And to that end, I was watching this video that you had with, I think it was, I don't know if I'm pronouncing it right, Jesse Björle's grandson, Your Wife and Yourself, The Classical Revolution. And I thought it was interesting, this guy who is your friend, Norbert Brianine.
Yeah, yeah.
He mentioned something, and it was really heartfelt with the way he presented it, that he'd been holding something in his heart for a long time, and that the only other person who understood it was you. So could you elaborate on what exactly that was?
Well, he was a real genius. He was absolutely unique. He was of Jewish origin, from Austria. And when the Hitler problem became so active, he was among those who fled and went to England. And when he got to England, he found he was put in prison, a kind of prison, because he was a German pedigree, even though Jewish, a Jewish victim of Hitler. And therefore, he and his friends were stuck into a kind of British prison. Then there was a slight improvement in the circumstances, and he and his quartet became one of the greatest musical groups in all modern history. Absolutely remarkable achievement. He became, through a meeting of a friend of mine on the streets of Paris, when something I had written was on the street, and he was fascinated with that. And by that, we became close friends and remained that until his death. But he was actually a first-rate genius. His work is remarkable. If you understand the string quartet in particular, he's absolutely remarkable in what he and the team did, the home dais quartet did. So this is part of the beauty of life. He's dead, unfortunately. He was actually younger than I was. But he was one of those geniuses and a center of radiation of genius, in that and other ways. We had, at that point in our association, until prior to his death, we were associated with, through this group of people in Europe and elsewhere, with all the greatest musicians, or most of the greatest musicians, then living in Europe and the United States. And believe me, that was a happy experience. When you find yourself with your next-door neighbor, your closest friend in your context, or all people who love what you love and are part of the same thing you're part of, then it's a pretty good feeling. And one of the things that's good about artistic and other work and scientific work is a byproduct of that, is you get involved, you find something in yourself which you really respect. You are participating in something which is important to you, which defines your life as meaningful. You have all these wonderful musicians, the greatest talent, musical talent that existed in the world in that time. These are all sort of my friends, all in this group, along with Norbert and so forth. What do you want, anything better than that in life? And there are things like that in other forms of life, in science and so forth. These are the things that count. And these are the experiences that are precious for you when all your friends are dead. I'm getting to this age of nearly 90, and I've got a lot of, all my friends are dead cases. But I have memories of these people, memories of these old friends. And this is one of the most beautiful experiences of my life. And thus, I wish everyone would have the same experience.
Good evening, Mr. LaRouche. He's listening.
Good evening.
Thank you. My name is Jessica White. I'm from Brooklyn. And I'm not exactly sure what my question is as a question, so I'm just going to kind of throw some things out there. Since I've been involved in the LaRouche Organization, I've come to know things I never knew before, and I get very, I don't know, frustrated with trying to go out there and do the type of organizing and talk to people and get them to understand what's going on and get them to do something about it. So I've been thinking all types of things to do beyond what I've already done. And I'm not trying to toot my own horn or anything. I'm just trying to get people in this audience to understand that maybe if they're feeling this way, it's because this is what we have to do. So if we're part of this organization, this is what we have to do. We have to get that frustration to build up, to start annoying people enough and giving out enough materials and going through enough reflection on what to do. So I've even thought of writing an ed-oc to the New York Times. I've thought of handing out material on buses, making charts that show what Glass Steagall is, going through a lot of the things that we as individuals have to come to to really fight what's going on and get Obama thrown out. So I guess what I'm trying to say is, what are some of the really practical things that we can do to make this happen? Because if I have to write the ed-oc, I'm working with colleagues within the organization now to get something through the UFT on Glass Steagall. We're met with all types of sophistry every time we introduce this bill, this resolution, and yet we keep plugging at it. So now we think, after months of really hard work, we'll finally get this through the UFT. Then there are other places that, you know, things I've thought of doing, talking to congresspeople, going to their offices like we did for Glass Steagall and the Homeowner and Protection, Bank Protection Act. And now it's at the point where I'm getting to feel that I need to hand out stuff on buses, write to the New York Times, write to congresspeople, who are these military people that we need to contact, that have been in contact with you. Maybe we need to jump on their case, too. So, you know, I think the people in the audience are feeling that, and we need to know some really practical ways of getting this to happen. I guess that's my opinion.
Well, as you know, the greatest thing to experience is a surprise.
A surprise.
You walk in to talk to somebody, and what they're going to do, as you know from experience, the first thing you're going to run into in most cases is they're going to pre-discount anything you've got to say. I don't care whether they've seen you for the first time, know who you are, don't know who you are, whatever. The tendency is, on the one hand, is to try to ingratiate themselves with you, one side, or to pretend to doubt you and say, "Where are you getting that from?"
Exactly.
And therefore, the element, the greatest element of art is the element of surprise. And you know what that is. You know what it is in music. You know what it is in science and so forth. If you want to get a class awakened in a schoolroom, you have to surprise them. Because if they could pre-discount you, they're just going to sleep there and watch you. If you surprise them in a way that they cannot deny, then they're going to show some respect, and they're going to respond. And they're going to start asking you things rather than trying to tell you things. And I'm sure that, and this often comes in terms of what you're talking about, is getting in certain strange audiences. For in a classroom, you may feel perfectly comfortable. You know the territory. You know how the people are. You've got the pace even before you get in there. If you go out in the streets with strangers, you're not so sure that you can pull the element of surprise.
Right.
And when you get out in the street more or in these situations more, then you begin to get more self-confidence and realize that when you're in the classroom, you're self-confident. When you're out in the classroom, you're not as self-confident. But you find, that's okay, if I understand that, that's the game, the way this game is being played. I've got to get in there and not be hesitant, but go in there with certain caution, but a certain cleverness. And you're going to give them a pleasant surprise that's going to get their attention, and they're going to start thinking. They're not going to react to you. They're going to start thinking about what you're going to say. Once they're thinking about what you are saying, you've got the situation at hand. It's all yours then, however far it can go.
Thank you.
And you have, the whole thing is, how do you define your self-confidence, the proper self-confidence? How do you keep from exaggerating? In the classroom, you know how to do it. You know exactly what the rules are implicitly. And on a different environment, you may not be so confident. This is an environment I don't know as well, and you may be hesitant. Well, the best thing to do it is just practice it and get involved with other people more, the intermediate thing, where you can get more discussions with small groups of people and things like that, and get their reactions to you in a friendly response area.
And that's what we should do.
Yeah, so we should be, we're forming small group, collect groupings, where we work together in a small group, and we discuss what's going on out there, not the classroom area as such necessarily, but some other area. And you broaden your ability, your confidence in dealing with a larger area thing. And so the more you do that way, the more strength you have in confidence in doing it.
Thank you.
I think the prognosis for you is very good.
Thank you.
Hi, Lynn. This is Mark Fairchild from Philadelphia. My question is, speaking of surprises, I was very surprised when the New York Times about a week ago came out with this bombshell expose of the Department of Justice laundering hundreds of millions, maybe billions of dollars in drug money. And I wanted to ask, what significance do you think this has in terms of removing Obama from office? Does this represent a signal on the part of a faction of the establishment that they're getting ready to pull the plug on Obama? And I guess a second correlated question is, how important do you think this Fast and Furious scandal is in terms of creating a kind of Watergate-like environment that would enable us to remove Obama?
Well, Fast and Furious is obviously going to be a factor which is used politically in the present situation. This is not a simple kind of situation, but there are many conflicting kinds of interests involved, particularly when something is not going too well. There's a tendency of someone to start lynching their neighbor, the thing that, you know, we've got some competition here, I've got to lynch this guy who I was associated with, that sort of thing. So you're in a chaotic situation in which there's nothing positive coming out of this president, nothing positive, for anybody who's serious, just as a citizen of any kind of interest. There's nothing for them in this president. He represents no good. He is a no-good president, and worse. So therefore, you have a tendency for people to dump ship. For example, you tend to have people going from Republican to Democrat and Democrat to Republican in various ways, simple things like that. There is very little inherent stability in the affinity tendencies within society today. Very few people trust anybody else. And the trust among people is much lower than what it had been even the time that Obama came into office. You think back to what it was like when Obama was first in office. Now, he was a bum, and I knew it, but in the first period of his incumbency, I was in a situation where I was working with people who were then working with Obama. I knew what he was. I knew he had been incarnated as president in some fashion or other. But then I began to see, after a couple of bills that were put through Geithner, I saw what was really going on. And therefore, in the following year, in the following spring, I laid out, I had a complete diagnosis, a fully accurate diagnosis of exactly what this guy was, exactly what he was going to do. He's a carbon copy psychologically of the Emperor Nero. And stuck into office, in powerful office, he was going to act like the Emperor Nero more and more, as the Emperor Nero himself acted more and more like the Emperor Nero, as he began killing people indiscriminately, which is what this guy's doing now. So those are the kinds of problems we face, that we are in a situation which the lack of the sign of equality of leadership emerging, which could be trusted to do something which is needed badly. Now, the lack of that confidence is holding the American population at bay. They don't know who they can trust. And the more the Democrats continue to support Obama, and when they see the mess that the Republican assortment is right now, the American people tend to lose confidence in their own future. They don't have somebody that they think is even a decent guy they could trust as a bad president. You know, people often say, "Well, that president's no damn good, but I got to support him. He's the president." But that doesn't exist anymore. This guy is pure bum, and there's no sign from the Democratic Party that they're going to do anything about it. And my assessment in looking at this situation is, and it's a good assessment, it's a knowledgeable assessment, there are a great number, relatively speaking, of Republicans who I would prefer over a large number of Democrats, and somewhat vice versa. So therefore, I realize that what we need to do this time, and the way we have to think about how we deal with the social situation out there, we have to think on the merit of the citizen, not the partisanship. Yes, partisanship is not indifferent. It's not an indifferent question. But we've come to a time when there's been so much betrayal of what people thought they trusted, that today you can only bring together an effective force in the Congress by putting the partisan eye aspect a little bit to the one side. And when it comes to the issue, it should be the issue as such, and the implications of that issue, which we go with. When we get to that point, if we think we can possibly win, if we think we can possibly get Obama out of office, I think you will see a revolutionary change in the reaction to the population. For example, if the word came out today, the Democratic Party is dumping Obama because he's a bum, for the various reasons of course, which he'd be dumped, then you would find a revolution in politics, because the Democratic Party would by and large begin to become the Democratic Party again, at least in the rank and file. And at the same time, you would have Republicans who, having looked at some of what the Republican candidates are, would say, "Ah, not that for me this time." And they would say, "It's much better to be a citizen in holding office in the United States than to be a citizen being held in office by a party." And that's what we have. You've probably heard some of that today. The report that was given today was the fact is, we're functioning as citizens first. We're functioning as citizens of the nation first. And when we run in office in a state, a federal office as a state, we are running as citizens of the United States, not members of the state primarily, but associated with the state in a secondary role on the state level. And that's the way it should be. And I think that kind of formulation, once the shakeup were to occur, in which Obama had been thrown out, I would think you will find a strong bipartisan tendency among the incumbents on the federal level, while they might continue to have a state influence on the state level. And I think that's where we should be headed right now, because I know under those circumstances, like, for example, on the military question, we have a number of people who are tied to the US military at the highest level, the simplest level. They are actually more competent on some aspects of the military question, and I trust them on that. I trust their instincts. I know them. So therefore, you would have some people, because of their state-level concerns or other concerns, professional concerns, might be more suited for the Democratic Party at this time. Fine, so what? So therefore, we have a mixture of Republicans and Democrats, and maybe an independent or two thrown in here and there, but not actually thrown in, but that's all right. And under those circumstances, I think if we can get that now, if we can get that understanding in the month of December, I think we've got it made. Because we're going into the early part of the next year, and then things are going to get sort of closed up in preparations for the coming presidential elections and state elections. This is the time, this immediate time. And I think it's possible. And I think it's necessary for me, for example, to do everything possible to make it happen, which is what I'm trying to do.
Good evening, Mr. LaRouche. My name is Olga Benz, and I'm from Chaman, New Jersey. I was brought up in a communist country, so I see right away what the occupant of the White House is doing. He's not governing, he's ruling, and he's a communistic dictator. That's what he is. And I was just wondering, he did so much crime and damage in this country. I came here in 1971 after the Russian invasion, which was in 1968. And when he was campaigning, I know right away, when he said, "I'm not going to govern, I'm going to rule," and hope and change, yes, we can. That's how the Cuban, what's his name, Castro did when he was campaigning. But I think American people, they were sleeping. I mean, they are very naive and sometimes dumb. I'm sorry, because you don't know what communism is. It's misery, tyranny, and slavery. When I came here, I kissed the ground because I was so happy. I am in a free country. And when I see this bomb, what he's doing, it breaks my heart. I'm getting so upset. Yes, he should be thrown out, kicked out from the office, and I don't know why it wasn't done. Why? Can anybody explain it to me? The whole country knows. He said, "I'm going to be unifier." No, he became a divider, and he's a racist. And it's just unbelievable that, I mean, deliberately, he's sabotaging this country. We can have here jobs. I mean, we can...
I'm sorry. Can you ask your question, just because the time is short?
Okay, so if Mr., yeah, my question is, because Mr. LaRouche said that he's, you know... he's, you know, the, the, no, the empire of England, that he is their outcome, no, he's a communist, communistic dictator, he doesn't have anything to do with the British Empire. That's my question.
No, the British Empire is the problem, that is the problem. It's the only empire on this planet. And if, for example, let's take the case of Africa. The entirety of Africa is a British colony, and it's a mass murderous British colony. And similar kinds of things. What, look, for example, Saudi Arabia is a tool of the, is a tool of the British Empire. The nine eleven was organized by the British with the collaboration of the Saudis in terms of that operation. That's the fact. So that we, we have, you have, what you have is, you have evil on this planet, as well as some things that are not evil. And the British Empire and what it's done to Africa is an example of evil. You have also, in the nature of the, what the old systems of government, you have many cultures which have elements of oppression characteristic of the government. This characteristic of government comes from the old monocle, monocle system, the oligarchical system, in which, in all oligarchical systems, there's a tendency of complete repression. Sometimes it's silent repression, sometimes it's violent and loud repression. But people get to know that if you do certain things in a certain way, you get punished, one way or the other. Things happen to you that you wouldn't happen otherwise. So you have, in most of the systems in Asia, we've gone through that. We've had cases like that in the south and in the, in the United States, the slavery system, which was introduced here, it's very similar. So we have repression as such, in many manifestations throughout the world. We in the United States are relatively free of most of it, of the worst of it. Other countries are more susceptible of it. But the way I approach it is not, is not to worry about that aspect as such, but to look for the cure. The cure, the cure lies in, in what the potential of the individual human mind is, the culture, the development of that, of that human mind. And anything that represses that potential bothers me, and should bother anyone. In the United States, we have relatively, the, or have had relatively, the greatest relative freedom of any part of the world. We've achieved it. But now, in the recent period since Bill Clinton left office, we've had nothing but tyranny, oppressive tyranny. And the British are tyrannical power. They kill more people, the British kill more people on this planet than anybody else, by all kinds of methods. But the repressive methods in Africa and elsewhere, in other parts of the world, they're there, they're reality, I'm very familiar with them. And I know what happens in Europe and other parts of the world, this, in this way.
Hi, my name is Dan Gring from the Philadelphia area, Philadelphia Group. Mr. LaRouche, I'd like to ask you a question in three parts, really quick. First part is, if I have your permission, I would like to give my support to Hillary under the duress that she has to deal with every day with Mr. Barack Obama. And I don't know how close you are to Bill, but if it's possible, you can encourage him to make maybe a public statement about what he's, Obama has done to his wife. And then third, I'd like to work with the Philadelphia chapter to try to put something in writing to the local papers about how he brutalized her when she's doing her part to keep our world at peace. Thank you.
Okay, well, I think the only solution for that thing is throw him out of office. He's not gonna be reformed. He may be imprisoned or something, but he's, or put into a mental asylum, but he's not gonna be reformed. He probably, the prognosis is, he's got an incurable evil inside him. And there's not, that's not gonna be changed. The point is, when we get that kind of situation, we may elect people to office, we discover they have these characteristics, we should throw them out. We can't say they have rights when they are abusing the rights of others. Are you going to attack the lesser or the greater evil? If, if a person in, in power is oppressing people from a position of power, it's they who must be removed, not the people punished for objecting to them. And the problem now is because of what's happened since the killing of John F. Kennedy. The United States has no longer had the morality it had at the moment that John F. Kennedy was killed. And particularly when his brother was also killed. And this was during the period of the Indo-China War, which would never have happened if Kennedy had not been killed. He was supported fully by General Douglas MacArthur in his opposition to the very idea of the Indo-China War. And he was killed because he opposed the war, which the British demanded that was be done to him. That's the truth. His brother was killed for the same reason. Bobby was already about to be nominated as a Democratic candidate for president at the moment he was murdered. The murder of, of the two Kennedys spelled out the cause for all the suffering which have occurred as a trend since that time. This is not to say that Bob, that, you know, Jack and Bob were great spirits of genius or something, they were both very intelligent people. But the issue here was, they were legitimately one, the president, one would have been the president if he'd lived to be, become president. The killing of these two changed the character of the United States to one of degeneracy, with Nixon, and we never really did one back. Reagan was Reagan, it was a break in some of the worst elements there, and had played some good roles. Bill Clinton was exceptionally good. He had certain shortfalls in terms of what his ability to perform was, but he was a good choice otherwise. And for two terms, that's really remarkable in those circumstances. One Bill was out of office, no, the hell came in. And they look and say, what's the history of this? Well, George W. Bush, H.W. Bush, and George W. Bush were offspring of the Bush who in New York put Hitler into power in Germany. He moved the money, together with the British, into Germany when Hitler was about to be thrown out of politics for legal reasons. And Hitler was put suddenly into a position of power again, for the purpose of creating the coup, which brought Hitler to power. And this was done by Prescott Bush, the father of George H.W. Bush, and the father of H. W. Bush. These people were both tied in any way to the Wall Street crowd, which had fully backed Adolf Hitler. And as soon as we'd won the war against Hitler and the invasion of Northern Europe, the British went back to supporting the same policies under which the British had used to put Hitler into power in Germany. And that's, that's the nature of things. And it's when we understand the true history of how the people of the United States became demoralized with a sense of betrayal and misleadership and lack of trust of anything, was linked, you know, what happened when, after Bobby was killed, and this process started. We have never been the same as a nation. We have never been courageous as a nation since these things happened, since the assassination of Kennedy, and we all knew it was an assassination, not by some oddball, but deliberate killing to eliminate a president of the United States because he was an obstacle to British policy. And his brother, when then about to become a candidate for the presidency, Democratic presidency, was killed too, and then hell broke loose. And it's been getting worse, most of the time since. And the case of Bill Clinton was sort of a miracle that came there somewhere, it's like in, in the middle of the sandwich, somewhere along the line. That's where we are. We now have to get our nation back. And we have to have the guts and the wisdom to do the things that will bring that back now.